Good evening. Good evening, everyone. Seeing it's already 7:02, I'd like to call meeting order. Please stand for Pledge of Allegiance. Pledge of Allegiance. To the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of America, one nation, one liberty, and justice for all. Evening, everyone. Item 1A on the agenda is approve the minutes from January 8th, 2024 regular meeting, January 16th, 2024 budget workshop, January 22nd, 2024 regular meeting, January 24th, 2024 budget workshop, and January 31st, 2024 budget workshop. I'll take a motion one at a time or for all of them. Albert and Board wants to do that. So the motion approved with minutes.
Well, if I don't have to repeat all the dates, I'll make a motion.
You don't have to repeat all the dates. And you don't have to attend all of them as long as you reviewed the meetings. You can certainly vote on them. So Lynn with the motion. Who's the second? Amanda? Okay. Any discussions, corrections, additions? Seeing none, all those, okay? All those in favor of the motion of accepting all the minutes signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstentions? Thank you. Motion carried unanimously. One B, additions to the agenda? Seeing none. One C, comments from visitors regarding agenda items. Comments from visitors. It's an opportunity. Thank you, and thank you for coming. Item 2, student representative report. Evening, girls.
Good morning.
Hi, Tondi.
Hi. Starting with Allgrove, Allgrove celebrated their 100th day of school with multiple games and activities throughout the day. Teachers wore their 100 days brighter shirts as students got to make their paper crown. Allgrove collected items for our East Granby food pantry. There was a competition of two sides. One side was the 49ers and the other side was the Chiefs. Students and staff got to go on which team will win, but play their item in the team's bin. What a great way to collect items and help our community. Moving forward to Seymour, congratulations to Anya and Dustin for being chosen to represent Seymour at the Celebration of Arts. Anya and Dustin were nominated because they demonstrate outstanding ability in visual arts and maintain a high level of citizenship and cooperative skills. To celebrate Year Across America Week, Seymour continues the tradition of the buddy reading activity. All Seymour students will be taking a field trip to Allgrove where they will be paired up and bringing money to read, create cool crafts, and enjoy snacks. Grade 4 students learn about energy transfers. Convention convention began this week. There were high fives and loud cheers as the vendors shot their bucket into the bucket. Our 4th and 5th grade students represented their winter concert on Wednesday. Thank you to the students, Miss Shalou, for leading the chorus and dance. The Connecticut Historical Society visited grade 5 where students explored the lives of native peoples in the region by observing and analyzing historical artifacts. Seymour students took part in the Great Kindness Challenge. Specifically, they collected personal care items to support our East Granby food pantry. It also had a pretty soft date of remote kindness. A Seymour parent, Ms. Maddon, is a professional dancer. She visited Seymour with her colleagues to share about dance, movement, and healthy body. Seymour's school honored Dr. Luther King. Learning about Dr. King's legacy was a great way to prepare for the Great Kindness Challenge. 4th grade students used nutrition labels to determine the healthiest cereal. Many beloved heroes were eliminated in the discussion, but she was picked as the healthiest cereal. Thank you.
And for the middle school, very exciting things. So for the January Students of the Month, grade 6 is Oakley Ferguson, grade 7 Alexander Bizzell, and grade 8 is Ivanika. So EGMS would like to recognize and thank our quarter 2 announcement team. Madeline Landell and Talon Sacristan did a phenomenal job getting our day started with the Pledge of Allegiance and the latest EGMS news to share. East Granby Middle School participated in Spirit Week along with East Granby High School during the week of, what was it, last week? Although East Granby Middle still had a lot of fun with Wacky Tacky Day and Hat Day, the runaway favorite of the spirit days, especially for the faculty and staff, seemed to be Students Dress As Teachers or Teachers Dress As Students Day. The adults now recognize why socks and crocs are a huge hit, and Mr. Phelan even got dressed hooded a few times by a bunch of other Mr. Phelans for having his hood up while looking at his phone. This week, we're celebrating Brandon Acts of Kindness Week. Today, Amanda Thompson was here on behalf of East Granby Public Library making kindness buttons with our 7th and 8th graders, and will do the same with 6th graders later this week. Last but not least, EGMS started two new clubs in collaboration with the Starbase Academy, the Infantil Program, where students build vehicles with go-karts, and the STEM Olympiad Engineering Program. Both programs have culminating events in late spring and have been a huge success so far. And as for the high school, East Granby High School saw a successful midterms period accompanied by a very exciting 2024 snowball hosted by East Granby Farms. Starting off in the month of February, the school hosted a karaoke party slash bake sale with lots of yummy snacks and drinks that hope to raise money for the school community. As for the band kids, CMEA presented an opportunity for a music composition and songwriting gallery at the Hartford Convention Center, in which students can look into conference sessions and fun featured performances. The high school also had a Spirit Week of their own, like I mentioned before, but we had tie-dye, Barbie Day, Crazy Hats, Twin Day, and Throwback Day. Also, a congratulations to Student of the Month Jacob Gil-Martin. Basketball season is unfortunately coming to an end, but both the boys and girls are holding strong. The girls actually saw sophomore Tamiya Hewitt ran for CHSCA or NCCC Player of the Week, which was pretty phenomenal, and accompanied several wins for their record along with a successful senior night. And finally, a happy National School Counseling Week was celebrated last week, so a big thank you, of course, to our great counseling department and team.
Thank you, girls.
Thank you.
Any questions or comments from the board? I appreciate your efforts and your presentation.
I think with the Allgrove Super Bowl, just because my office is in there, I think what they did is they had soup or bowl, and the kids brought in either cans of soup for the 49ers or items to put in bowls in the bin for Kansas City. And Kansas City was definitely overflowing, you know, last week, so.
We all know why.
All right.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, and I will be in touch with the two of you.
Yeah.
Okay. Just so the board knows, we meet with our representatives monthly, and we'll have some conversations about, you know, just kind of informal way, informal conversations about improvements, kind of from the eyes of our students. We met once last week, and we're going to, we were going to meet next week, but you guys have...
Junior meeting.
Junior meeting, yes. It's a very busy year, so we'll reschedule that. All right. Fabulous.
Thank you.
And no school tomorrow. All right. Any other questions for our two representatives? Thank you both.
Thanks.
Appreciate it.
Item 3, Chairperson's Report. First thing, we did get a letter to East Granby Board of Education from the Scouts of 270. Would like to say thank you for allowing them to use a skating pond in Warming High School on Monday, January 22nd. It is a town pond, but they did ask and mention they wanted to use it, and they're just very thankful. They do a good job, and the scouts in town, you know, have done lots of things to help a lot of people, and it's nice to see that they enjoyed the ice for probably three or four days, that it was safe out there. See it. Other things on my report is I'd like to thank Missy. Some of you seeing, we're finally seeing, I think it goes back to 2019, the roof grant money from the state of Connecticut. We spent a lot of money putting new roofs. We expected to get the state reimbursement. Was it 2019? Is that the correct year?
That was when the project was complete.
That's when it was completed, and I guess it must have been COVID down at the state level kept them from realizing they owe East Granby $332,000. And I know Missy's been knocking on their door, sending them letters and phone calls, and I think finally there's some resolution that the town will be getting that money. That'll go back to the town of East Granby. That'll go down into the general fund of the town. Tomorrow night, we have a Board of Ed budget workshop, 5:00 PM. It's going to be virtual. There's also a Board of Finance meeting tomorrow night, a virtual one, at 7:00 PM. And do we have any capital requests right now? Those are capital requests we're talking about?
We do not.
Okay, so really, there's nothing on the agenda that pertains to us, right?
Correct.
Okay, so it really doesn't pertain to us. But what does pertain to us is there's a town meeting on February 27th, 7:00 PM, to approve the administrator's contract that we agreed, that the board agreed to. So that's at the town meeting there. The Board of Finance, and I think you've seen in the report from Mary, wants to see us show them what a 5.25% looks like. And last thing I have is we did have a parent with a bus request. The update is that Missy has been in contact and has worked out an agreement to try, I see how things work out as we move forward. Hopefully, that's, hopefully, that's a taken care of deal. Okay, and that's the end of my report. I'll go to item 4, Superintendent's Report.
Sure. Well, we are going to start off with the superintendent report with another student voice. Lily Butler was a student, is a student of ours in East Granby who attends Southfield Voag. Lily, would you like to use us?
Yeah.
One for Shannon. Okay. And Lily is one of the four? Was it four graduates this year? Yes, graduating from Southfield Voag, and I was able to see their capstone projects, and I know Lisa was there, and John Corkin was there. And last year, we had a student that presented to us, and this year, we have Lily. So proud of you, and it's all yours.
Hi, guys. So my name's Lily Butler, and I'm an East Granby resident, and I'm currently senior at Southfield High School in the Agriculture Science Program. And I decided to attend the program because I have a small agricultural background, and my older brother was in the program, so I kind of wanted to try it out and see how it would be. So in our agricultural program, we have a three-circle model, which is FFA, classroom time, and the supervised agricultural experience, which is SAE. So my freshman year, we learned all about the FFA, and we were introduced to little bits of the program, like mechanics, woodworking, floriculture, small and large animals, as well as aquaculture. And I also earned my OSHA 10 certificate in the classroom. And over the course of the four years, I had opportunities to develop leadership and my career skills. So we have a lot of committees in our program, and I was the Economic Development Committee Chair for the past two years. And me, my co-chair, and our teacher, Mrs. Oliver, worked very hard on our holiday sale and our Ag Bingo over the past two years, and I also assist in starting fundraisers and bringing in money for the program. Over the past couple of years, I've also participated in career development events known as CDEs. A CDÉ team is made up of four students who, like, learn about a specific topic, and then we go in all compete at UConn with all the other Connecticut FA schools and all of their teams. So I had the opportunity to be on the poultry team, the mechanics team, and the agricultural business team. And our poultry team came fifth in the state, and our mechanics team came second, and our ag business team came first, which means that we got to go to National Convention in Indianapolis, which was really cool. I also was able to go the year before. At National Convention, we placed bronze as a team, and I placed bronze individual, which is a huge accomplishment. For the past two years, I've been on the nomination committee, where I got to interview ag students, so they were interested in being officers for the next school year. On this, I got to pick the officer slate to be presented, and all of the FFA students voted on it. And then for my SAE, I raised chickens and sold eggs. I originally started with 10 langhens from my grandfather's farm, and sophomore year, I was able to get 15 chicks, and I learned all about raising them, feeding them, all of their health diets, and all of the illnesses, and also learned about predators. And through this, my family and I, we built a whole chicken pen, and I got to learn about machinery, and a lot of work went into it. And through our SAE, we're supposed to get 150 hours per year in order to meet our program requirements. I say that I accumulated well over 500 hours over the past four years. And during my classroom times, I got to learn, I kind of took the mechanics path. So this year, I took tractor driving class, which was a lot of fun. We got to learn how to drive UTVs with trailers, also skids, steers, and the tractor. And I also took two building systems classes last year. I got to do framing, roofing, plumbing, and electrical. And this semester, I took floral design class with Mrs. Leflam, and I really enjoyed it, and we got to make flower arrangements, and we learned about budgeting and dealing with customers. And this year, this semester, I'm welding class, where we're learning about all about different types of welds, and I'm also in sustainable agriculture, and currently, we're tapping maple trees at school, which I think is so cool. And then throughout this all, I played field hockey and lacrosse for the past four years, and I feel like that I have had a well-rounded high school experience through this program, and I learned skills that, like, I'll carry throughout my whole life, like public speaking and leadership. And I just want to say thank you for allowing me the opportunity to attend this program at Southfield. And next year, I plan on attending Colorado State University for construction management. And we would like to invite you to our Ag Expo, which is April 3rd and 4th, where we showcase our program and all that we have to offer and all of our fun events going on. Thank you.
I did not know you played lacrosse and field hockey.
Yes.
I appreciate it.
Anybody have any questions or comments for Lily? And I want to thank her parents and her teacher for joining her this evening as well.
I was impressed with all that you've accomplished in the four years, and the system of those courses sound pretty interesting, too.
Thank you.
That's great. And chickens, I know you mentioned predators. I was going to ask you, how do you avoid that? I've done my chicken things. That's a tough one.
She had a lot of visuals to go along with.
That's a tough one. Okay, I appreciate it. Good luck with everything.
Yeah, good luck.
Congratulations. Congrats.
Make sure you keep us, or keep me in the know what you're up to, okay? Great. Thank you for your support of the program. It's wonderful to see you at our events and see the continuation of your support for students that don't stay locally but are, you know, still. Still ours. They really are, so thank you.
Thank you.
Absolutely, thank you.
Thank you.
Yes, you don't, don't feel bad if you'd like to testify. It's okay. We have a snow day tomorrow, too.
Thank you very much.
Okay, let's switch gears. CIC Grant Award. Earlier in the, in the fall, we applied for a small grant through CIC, and we were awarded $4,500, which is great. We will apply that for new sports, or it can be applied to supplies or equipment. It is the Robert Ford Athletic Grant Program. So we have received that check and will utilize it for our athletic department. CIC Boys Tennis Co-op. As the board knows, we've recommended that we continue a co-op with Canton, with East Granby being the home field. CIC did award the co-op. It is awarded for one year. We will reapply next year depending on what our numbers look like. So that's great. We're ready to move forward, and the kids are very excited. So thank you on their behalf for that support. Zonar update. Have a good update. May I pass it over to you, Ms. Heine?
Sure. In my note, I put in that we had, came into a little issue with the crap we were all set to move forward, and I finally got a hold of Zonar, and they came up with a little bug about the integrity of the data that's going to be shared. So at that point, when I wrote this, he didn't know when it was going to be completed. Five minutes before I came here, I got an email from him. He's meeting with M&amp;J tomorrow. They think they have it figured out, and he's hoping to start sending us information within the end of the week, so we're hoping, as long as that goes well. We've heard this before, so I have a little doubt, but at least he did get back to me, and they're working on. I guess there's an issue with, they only want East Granby parents and M&amp;J to get the information, and right now, they're not sure if the site's secure enough for that, which is what he told me. So hopefully, we could actually start testing.
And we'll do a test pilot with, we'll probably reach out to any board members that have students, you know, that ride the bus, as well as some of our staff members with students as our pilot, for anybody who's willing to. And Mr. Pass, please.
Yeah. This is a high priority of ours. I'm surprised that other towns around the use M&amp;J haven't been using Zonar.
Are we the first town to use it?
Yeah, I would think others would like to. We've been anxious to be able to help parents with it. I'm surprised other districts haven't done that, but I guess.
But they're already equipped.
We're ahead of the curve.
M&amp;J has the equipment. They invested in it for their buses.
Just for their buses.
Just for their buses. So we're just piggybacking. They use it for their buses, they love it for the buses, know where they are. More so for, if someone says, "Your bus ran a red light," they can say, "Oh, no, our bus is no longer there." We have, it's GPS tracked. They took it for their protection. So, and nothing, and then this is just piggybacking off of that. Some parents use Find My iPhone, do this, there's an app that goes with this, but right now, the app's not that secure, so they're not ready to roll it out. But M&amp;J invested in it more for their security, you know, for their protection on where their bus is, and they can't say, "No, my bus is no longer over there." So, so, yeah, they're using it, they're happy with it. It's just trying to roll it out to the app, and they're having issues with the app.
That happens initially.
Yep.
Great, okay. Missy, anything else?
That is all I have this evening.
Okay. Item 5, Committee Reports. Policy Committee.
Policy Committee met last, I think it was Monday, for a couple of hours, and we are meeting again two weeks from tonight for the next Board of Ed meeting to move the, to move the policy acceptance of, oh my gosh, I just forgot the name of the law firm.
Shipman and Goodman.
Shipman and Goodman's policy forward. So we're moving along on that.
Sounds good. Item B, Budget. We did have a budget meeting last week, and we do have one tomorrow, 5:00 PM. It will be virtual for us, and we'll be working on showing the Board of Finance a 5.25% increase, as well as the board probably should spend some time looking at what we feel is important, besides that 5.25% that they want us to. So that's where we're at, that. C, Curriculum.
We have a curriculum subcommittee meeting scheduled for this Thursday. We have a little bit of an earlier start time at 4:00 PM for this virtual meeting. Future meetings will be on the second, the second Thursday at 4:30 going forward as a virtual meeting. The agenda will be coming out shortly for that, but we will look forward to sharing what we talk about.
Good. Facilities, Rick.
Did not meet. Looking to get one on the docket in the next two weeks before end of month.
Okay. Negotiations, Mark?
You've kind of already touched on the point that I had about the town meeting on the 27th, and we're going to be discussing the admin contract. The one question I do have, did we get Kyle locked on to be there? Is he available?
Yes.
He is available, so Kyle will be there to summarize on our behalf.
Yeah, he's also going to be helpful for us to give information to the community of what happened statewide. I mean, we may, I mean, you know everything he did with our negotiations, but how we came up with that number, we just didn't pull that out of the sky. There's lots of data, and, you know, he could certainly support that better than us. Great. Communications?
I think our plan, can we actually confirm, are we meeting February 22nd? Is that what we were talking about at 4:30? Do you have that, Missy?
I do. Okay, and that's what you have to. And were there, do you have an updated list of who's on what committee? Do I? No.
Yeah, I do. I'll send it to you.
Can you, you know, just, because I don't know if there's anybody else who is interested in communication. It's on our website. We did update it. All committees are on the website? Okay. Under Board of Ed, Amanda. Okay, I can go there then and just invite.
And we had Ricky Borz to policy because he wasn't on that one.
I believe it's okay.
It's okay. I'll look and see. It's okay. Okay. Okay, item 6, Recommended Actions. A, Approve January 2024 Financials. I get a motion so we can start the discussion?
I move to approve the January 2024 financials.
Second. I'll move a second from John. Okay, now turn it over to Mary.
Well, I gave you the write-up in the package, but we already went over that, so I'm going to go right to the financials. So if you go to the financials, I put a little few more notes down the bottom, a little different from last month. You look at Object 111, which is certified personnel, it looks like it's trending to be a little over. Part of that was due to hiring a teacher that was filled by a sub last year. But if you also look at Object Code 112, which are non-certified personnel, if you match the two together, we're going to refine the budget for that area. We still talk about healthcare every month. Again, we post the employees' contributions monthly, so we're still hoping that that will balance at the end of the year. Object 330 is a new one. This is our special education. Well, there's a lot of other things in it, but it's primarily special education. We had a couple unanticipated invoices, so that's looking like it may be trending a little bit over. Again, we're only into January, so, but at the moment, the invoices that we have in looks like it's going to probably trend a little. Liability insurance each had last month, and again, 627 on the bus fuel. That was last year. I am still trying to, we have not locked in fuel yet for this year. Every time we think we're going to lock it in, it thinks it's going to go lower, then it actually goes higher because of everything that's going on. I am still working with Granby. Anna over in Granby and Mike at State Line to wait, so he still believes it's going to go a little bit lower, thinks at 3.09 right now, but he thinks that a couple more weeks it'll go lower. We were hoping to lock in within the next month, because if we wait too long, it's not beneficial. So I am working with Anna over at Granby to lock in the fuel. And that's my report.
Okay, any questions, comments? Seeing none, I'll call the question, call the motion. All those in favor of the motion of approving 2024 financials signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Motion carried unanimously. Thank you, everyone. B, Approve PA 13-60 Non-Educational Services that we provide. I get a motion for that?
Make a motion.
To approve those. Second by Mark. Okay, I guess we'll turn it back to Mary.
So you have a very big, long piece of paper for the PA. This is, so just to let you know, I looked up the Public Act 1360 on the website, and my understanding is what this report is supposed to do for the town is to look at ways to consolidate same things for trash or facilities. On here also has custodial clerical and some nurses' salaries that are on here along with their benefits. I'm not really sure why, but I kind of left it the same it was every year, because there's, you know, kind of new, so I just left it. But I did go down, a lot of this, a lot of the facility services we're all consolidating, our insurance. We were to consolidate our insurance, our business insurance, our property insurance is all consolidated with the town already. Facilities, we just changed our trash from what we were using to what they're using to try to save some money. So we're already trying to do that. Electricity, we also, we also, whatever they're doing, we're piggybacking off of the town. So a lot of the facility things, we're already trying to consolidate, so I will continue to do this, and it will be sent to the Board of Finance at their next meeting.
Okay, any comments or questions? Seeing none. All those in favor of approving Public Act 1360 Non-Educational Services signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Motion carried unanimously. Thank you. Item C, Approve a Field Trip.
Absolutely. We have our band, high school band and chorus, heading back to fantastic festivals. They, it's been an annual opportunity for them. It's a music adjudication festival. We did not attend for a few years. We are back attending, and they are looking at the date of Friday, May 31st. It is an all-day event. They come back like at 5:30 PM, and that's at Six Flags.
Did you say, I'm sorry, this is just the high school or the middle school as well?
It is just the high school.
The day, oh, so it's just up there, so it doesn't have any impact on Memorial Day Parade? That was my only question. So they're just going up there for the day?
Correct.
Not on Memorial Day. Okay. Anyone else, any questions or comments? Okay, I get a motion to approve the field trip. Since it's out of state, we have to approve out-of-state field trips, even not just across the line.
I'll make the motion to approve.
Okay, Amanda with the motion, Mark with the second. Was that a second? Okay. Any other discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Abstentions? Motion carried unanimously. Thank you. Item 7, Agenda Items for Future Meetings. We have the budget endorsement for school year '24, '25, and I guess we want to keep Zonar on there. Any updates for Zonar?
Yes.
Anything else? Anything else? Okay, Item Eight, Comments from Visitors. Yes, sir.
I was wondering if you could elaborate on the special education costs that are trending higher and how they were unanticipated?
I can speak a little bit to that. When we do a budget, so this is a general comment, we budget for what we know in terms of cost. So sometimes, there's changes throughout the year that we can't budget for because we weren't aware of. So sometimes, you know, students require more services. Sometimes, we have a change in our OT, occupation or physical therapist. Sometimes, we have a need for an increase in speech and language pathology. So every year, we're doing it right now, we'll budget for exactly what we know for our costs for next year. But a lot of things, because obviously, you know, school year's fluid, so we have changes that occur once the school year begins.
Thank you. Follow-up question, so you, that's in regards to a planning from like a year ago?
Correct.
Okay. Now, is it anticipated that this expense is going to be, need to be continued in the next year?
It's not an expense, it's a, a variety of costs throughout the district for a number of items.
Yeah, I'll just add, it's a number that we just can't grab, because somebody can move into the district, someone can move out of the district, and those kind of programs can be in tens of thousands of dollars or more. So, well, like Superintendent said, we plan for what we know. Like, right now, we're planning for next year's budget. We plan for next year's budget with what we know, and special ed costs can change, and they're federally mandated, so we have to provide them. So those are things, it's something we always keep an eye on, because it's a big dollar item.
And there's also some areas that are not necessary for special education.
Okay. Do you ever look at any, you know, the types of, you know, whatever specifically this is, and how that can be avoided by doing it locally?
Yes, all the time.
Absolutely.
Absolutely.
Is that being looked at in this case, or?
We presently do that, which we're talking about here, whatever we can to lower the costs.
Okay.
The more programs we provide in-house, the less money we have to spend sending students somewhere if we don't offer the program. So we're looking to see what we can offer here, and even looking down in the future, what can we offer that could maybe attract towns from other areas of sending students here? It's an expensive issue, it's something that's, a lot of time is spent looking at it. Because, again, it's not a number that we can just grab and know that's what it's going to be. It can change dramatically.
Does someone like me get more involved in those aspects?
I appreciate your questions and comments. Thanks for coming. Okay, no other comments? Any other comments, no other visitors? I'll ask for a motion for adjournment.
Motion.
Okay, Mark with the motion, we have a second.
Second.
Amanda with a second. Any questions or comments? All those in favor of the motion, signify saying aye. Aye. Opposed? Abstentions? Motion carried unanimously, thank you, everyone, meeting adjourned. Thank you for coming.
Coolest meeting ever.
It's too late.
All our meetings are adjourned.
Always.
Bob, I don't think, he asked how he could get more involved with some of that stuff.
Specifically, yeah, I didn't think you...
Oh, yes, no, we're...
I think you missed that part.
Showed me out or anything, but it was like, special education services and how you guys look at that information, what's being spent, what can be done going forward to maybe, you know, bring the types of services to bring in, what's the process of looking at that?
Sure, I'm sorry, could we off the record before we...
Yeah, we're, the meeting's adjourned, we're off the record.
Are we done?
We may be on tape still, but the meeting's adjourned. But to answer your question, we look, we are always looking at different ways. I mean, we've looked at other facilities we may need to use to save money in that case, staffing issues. I mean, it's something that's a lot of time is spent with. And if you're more interested, getting involved with the Board of Education, you know, getting involved with the board would be helpful, too. You know, we're always looking for people that want to help out. But that's an area where it's a big dollar item, and a lot of time is spent. That's why we look at it on a monthly basis, because we have to provide a budget coming up to the Board of Finance now for next year, and, you know, things happen over the summer that can lower those costs or increase those costs, dramatically, actually. And every town struggles with it tremendously.
Right.
Because it's a tough one.
Yeah, and I appreciate the comment on the participating in awards, coming to these meetings. I was more curious about like, how do parents get more involved providing input?
Well, this is one way, or contacting the school principal. We certainly try to get parents, we like to have parent input. It's nice that you came tonight. You see, we don't get a lot of it. We are on television, so we've done that during COVID, and we like that, that people can at least see what's going on and people getting more involved, because we do spend a substantial amount of the town's tax dollars, and we want to do it effectively and efficiently.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. Thank you.